Some brain damage.
Okay.
Could be worse, I guess.
Yeah. I'm going to call the meeting to order for October 27th. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Gross here. Vice Chair DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade excused. Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner Lowe.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Excuse me.
Absent. Commissioner Self-Lacanick.
Here.
Thank you.
Can you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, do I have any oral communications that is not on tonight's agenda that would like to come forward? Okay, since we have no oral communications, I'm going to close that. We don't have any approval of any minutes for this one. No consent calendar. Can I have an update on the public hearing plan?
Yes, good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I just want to give a timeline of what is our plan of action. And we have Tom here, and he could correct me if I missed something. But tonight, we're going to provide you an overview of the draft housing element. And then after, hopefully, if there is any revisions or recommendations of any changes, we'll go in there and revise it, and then we're going to send it up to the state of California as a draft proposal. Hopefully, they'll provide us feedback. And once we get the feedback, we're anticipating that will be early 2022. We'll come back and, you know, look at their comments and revise it, bring it back to the Planning Commission with the state's comments and revisions. And then hopefully, at that time, go through the process again and revision. And if the Planning Commission sees forth, recommend it to City Council, then we'll take it to council for adoption. Okay? But tonight, we're going to present that. We do have our Terra Nova here, our consultant, Nicole Christie, right behind me. But I'm going to let Tom present the item. Thank you.
Excuse me for one moment. Can I just acknowledge that we do have Commissioner Riley present?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gross and members of the Planning Commission. General Plan Amendment 2101 considers an update of the city's housing element for the period of October 2021 through October 2029 is what this covers, as well as an associated negative declaration that is the SEQA portion of it, which is a negative declaration, and I'll tell you about that in a moment. And the consultant is here with us tonight, Nicole, for any questions I can answer also. The state requires cities to prepare general plans to guide them in their development of their communities. And the general plan includes seven elements, including this housing element. But this is the one that has to be redone every few years. Right now, it's eight years is what it is. The housing element, let's see, finds the needs for housing at the current time and in the future, and also for residents and special needs groups. It also mitigates potential constraints or barriers to housing and contains a plan to meet the housing needs that we come up with. You also received a letter tonight from one of the property owners in the city that would like to have their property identified for, as an underutilized property, basically is what it would be. The housing element update process includes a baseline analysis of where the city stands today. It finds adequate property sites to meet regional housing needs, which is called RENA. You probably have heard of that. I'll tell you about that in a moment. And we conduct public workshops, and then it defines programs that will make the housing possible. Now, RENA is mandated by the state to quantify the need for housing in California. This guides local planning to address existing and future housing needs resulting from projected growth. Los Alamitos was assigned a total of 769 new housing units. That doesn't mean they'll be built necessarily, but we have to find space for those 769 units. They're in four categories: very low income, 194 units; low income, 119 units; moderate income, 145 units; and above moderate, 311 units. The document was developed through meetings of staff, the consultants, commissioners, council members, residents, and stakeholders. Community input was sought throughout the work, through workshops, and information was disseminated through the city website, emails, and social media. Soon, the Planning Commission will consider whether to recommend adoption by the city council, but we're going to send it to the state first, like Ron was saying. And they will have 60 days to look at it and then give us notes on whether we need to change anything about it or not. A negative declaration, which is the SEQA component of this, let's see, where am I? Is also under consideration. You won't vote on this tonight, either one of these. Well, we're recommending that you don't vote on it tonight. This document concludes that the proposed housing element will not result in adverse effects to the environment. There are certain things that are listed in a negative, I mean, in the initial study for a negative declaration, and those items that are in the initial study were determined to not result in adverse effects on the environment. The public review period for this document began on October 11th and ends on November 1st, which is after this meeting. The, we put copies, I mean, we sent copies to other cities, other departments, like the Airport Land Use Commission and stuff like that, the base, you know, to ask them if they have any comments on it as well. There's also many spaces for the public to read the document as well. The community center, the library, the Los Alamitos Rossmore, or Seal Beach Library down there on Montecito Road, and here at City Hall. Next week, the draft housing element will be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They're the people at the state that look at it. Following the review and completion of their changes, the housing element will return to the commission for a consideration of recommendation to the city council. Tonight, staff recommends that the commission conduct a public hearing for comments concerning the draft housing element and negative declaration, followed by commissioner discussion, and then continuance of the public hearing to a date uncertain, because we don't know when it'll be done. And they have 60 days, but they could be quicker, but we doubt it, because every city and state is doing your housing element at the exact same time, so they have a lot of documents to read. There are three important pages I wanted to point out in the housing element. The first one that everyone gravitates toward is the map. If you could bring up the map, Doug. It's tough to see, because, you know, the sites are small when you blow up the city like that, but as you'll see, there were sites that were identified as places where homes could be built, possibly. The state requires us to find places that are reasonable, that they could eventually have homes. So the places we've identified that are big are the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, which we've talked about, the West Ed Building, which is down there at the bottom of the base on the south. That sold recently, and we already have developers by the hundreds coming to us. There is also open space, you know, behind Arrowhead Industries, so that gets identified just because it's an open space, and we don't have to tear anything down necessarily. And then, of course, there are all the places throughout Apartment Row and Old Town West that have already been identified in the past, but we had to come up with others as well. So that's what those are about. The next thing that we do with this map is we make a list, and it's called the Housing Inventory. That's on page 101 of the document. It's too small to put up on the screen, but it's basically a list of all those addresses and how much housing could possibly be on each one of those properties, based on the development standards and what they would require. It's also, let's see, the inventory is also AB3. It's under, it's, yeah, AB3. And the map is AB5. It's a couple of pages later. And then the last one is just our RENA numbers, which I've already told you. That's on page 35. That's the breakdown, if you want to look at that. And that's also known as 2-26 in your packet as well. And so that kind of concludes my report. We have plenty of discussion, if you'd like. We, yeah, and I also have the housing element up there on the screen in case you would like to go to a certain page and make any comments on it. So, back to you.
Thank you. Do I have any questions of the commissioners of the staff? Okay, since I have no questions for the commissioners, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak on this particular topic can come forward. Please let us know your name. Please sign in, and I'm going to actually ask you to stick to five minutes.
No, this is Jim Curran. I'm an owner in the area. I just needed, do you have a copy of this, so we could see what you're talking about?
It's, I can bring one in here. It's 100, it's many pages.
Oh, it's a lot of pages.
So you can't actually probably read it during this time.
Okay, okay.
So it is in the City Hall. It's online. It's also in the library, and it's also over in the community building.
Yes, yes, sir. Just visit the city's website. We have it online on the city's website. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Ricardo Ortiz. I'm a resident in Rossmore. My father here is, he's senior. He's a longtime resident in the Highlands since 1962. I grew up here in the community and whatnot, but I now live in Rossmore with my family. My question is, how will this recent development with Governor Newsom, where I believe, I don't know, was it executive order he did, or the state legislature or an injunction, where there's no longer any kind of more or less quote-unquote zoning, like no more residential, they stripped, I guess, all the zoning requirements? I don't know when that, when does that go into effect, Tom?
What it is, is they, the people kind of describe it as getting rid of R1 zoning, single-family residential. What it means is that the R1 zoning can have more homes on it than it can now, not just one house, but many houses.
Like, for example?
Up to four, probably.
Okay, let me give you an extreme example. Say, down in the Highlands, a developer comes along, and whether it's by eminent domain or whatever, they decide, okay, we want to purchase these four homes right here in the Highlands, residential, and all the owners have cooperated, because, say, they want to move out for whatever reason, and they purchase all those lots. And what's to keep them then from coming in and, say, developing whatever they want to do, a two-story condo unit, duplexes, triplexes? I mean, so how will that new policy that they're going to develop in the state through Governor Newsom's, how will that involve eventually in this next few years of this whole planning idea? Does anybody know?
That really, it's not something that's part of the housing element. So it's probably a discussion, you can call me, Tom Oliver, and I'll give you my card, and then we can talk about that separately. But yes, there could be more homes built there, so let me.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you.
My name is Rick Ortiz. I've been a resident of the Rossmo Highlands since 1962. I'm an original owner, and I've seen Los Alamitos grow from a vacant lot to a dichondralawn. Everything has just grown up, it's just wonderful. And my concern here is, I'm also a retired L.A. City Fire Captain. I was raised in South Central. I worked in South Central. I'm a runaway from South Central. So I'm concerned about affordable housing. I've seen affordable housing. It's not conducive to a nice community. So that's my concern regarding this housing. I know that President Obama came in with Section 8, where, as my son stated, they can come in and buy three or four houses, put it in an apartment building, and part of that's going to be affordable housing, or undesirables in a community. Now you're going to have a lot of problems. I've seen it. I've experienced it. So that's my concern regarding buying these properties and putting in these buildings. And today, when you build something, supposedly, you're supposed to have a percentage of that for affordable housing. Affordable housing means a portion of undesirables. You see it affecting our community every now and then. They robbed about three or four times AT&amp;T down the street. They recently robbed that Bed and Store down there next to Target. Boom, 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 like nothing. So they've had numerous robberies in the community. Well, with affordable housing, you're going to increase a lot more. So that's my concern. So my question is, as I asked you earlier, the governor just passed a zoning, where they eliminated zoning. And President Obama has Section 8, which I already stated. So I appreciate if you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to come forward? Okay, seeing as how there's no other people wanting to come forward, I'm going to bring it back up to the commission. Do we have any comments for the staff?
I have. Regarding the letter that we've got. Is that something that we need to address? Do we accommodate? I don't know whether it's, if we count it all as underutilized, I guess evidently there's two lots, and one has the preschool use, or whatever's on there. Yeah, the preschool. And evidently, the other parcel must be already developed, I guess, either as a house or units. Is it, does it matter one way or the other, I guess, is what I'm asking. If, should we include it, the entire parcel? Or there's two parcels? I don't know if it's, it's got two APNs, so I guess one is there, at least assessed individually.
Let's talk about the parcel first. I believe, I don't know if Tom's aware, but I think the preschool is quite large. It's on many parcels.
So it straddles the.
Yes, so that's why I think you have the multiple addresses there.
Right.
Okay, so it's one preschool on multiple parcels.
Fine.
So that's the first question. The second question, I believe we did take a look at this, correct? There are housing, and so I believe in a prior, sorry, I get my, I think it was at a planning commission, the property owner did come in and request it, and I think we were going to take a look at it, but, you know, I don't know if Nicole has anything, but we'll take a look at it.
Would it be to our advantage to include that?
Nicole.
As underutilized, just in the sense of meeting, trying to meet the requirements?
Commissioner, that area is labeled as underutilized, but for above-moderate income housing, not for our affordable housing allocation. So it would make, it would make no difference. We can certainly identify it in the plan and add those addresses. There is one, I believe there's one listed already, and he'd just like both of them listed. So that would, that would not be a big change.
Right, okay.
Do I have any other comments or questions for the staff? Seeing as how I have no comments, do we keep it open and just move it forward?
Continue it to a date uncertain.
Okay, we'll continue this to an uncertain date at this time. Thank you, everybody. And then we go on to staff report. Do I have a staff report, none?
We don't have a staff report tonight.
Discussion, none. Items from the community development.
I'm going to have Tom go first, and I'll follow up. Tom?
Are you going to talk about the dates of the meetings?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah. As I mentioned before, the Lamson property is getting quite a bit of notice. Many developers have been coming to us and talking about housing and stuff like that. Everybody knows about that, so that's a pretty busy, that'll be a busy thing that comes up soon. The Los Alamitos luxury apartments, we will not do a tour of that for now. We are negotiating over when the certificate of occupancy will happen, so that's coming later. So we'll discuss that if you want to tour later on. Let's see. The Chevron has brought in their plans. That will be starting soon. And the medical building on Cotella, they brought in their plans, and that should be starting soon as well. And I think that's all the ones that are under discretionary permitting. So that's it for me. You have anything else?
Yes, I got a few items. So the first item, you know, right now, we're heading into November, December holiday season, and, you know, the end of November is, of course, Thanksgiving, and of course, the end of December is Christmas. So I propose to the commission that we do not hold a meeting in November, but we hold one in December, but we hold it in the early part of December. The date that I've targeted here and request is December 8th, which is a Wednesday. All right, so that's my, that's the first request, and so after my items, if the commission can, you know, recommend that to us, that'd be appreciated. Another item here is we have some projects coming in, and I hope you're aware of it, is the first one is the OC SAN project coming up. It has already begun. Right now, they have begun with what they call the grouting work, so it's very minimal, and it's done at night, and they're starting over at Lexington and Cotella. But starting on Monday, November 1st, you'll actually see the manhole cover repair, which where they're bringing in jackhammers and big, large equipment, heavy equipment. And right now, when it's, what basically we like to say is anywhere near a commercial outlet or industrial, they're doing nighttime work to hopefully not affect traffic, but if it goes anywhere by a house or a place of residence, then we have switched it over to daytime work. So again, I just want to let you know that that's coming in. They start November 1st. It's a 20-month project, and so please keep, you know, keep updated, connect with the city via the social media sites, our website. We have a weekly email blast that goes out that will provide updates. But also, the OC SAN has also provided their own website and a toll-free number, a 24-hour hotline, that if you have any concerns or questions, please give a call to that, and we have all that information on the city's website. Let's see, what else we got here? Typically, in the past non-COVID time, we have a commission dinner. We are foregoing our commission dinner. And the reason why was, we had to kind of reserve a facility back in July. And so when they were reserving the facility in July, they asked for a deposit, and basically they said that if we had to cancel because of COVID situation, then we wouldn't get our money back for the deposit. So at that time, the city manager and I decided not to do that. We wanted to be prudent with money of the city. So we are planning on doing something small, but I will email that out to you once we get more information, and it's just something small, probably local, probably we'll go out to a local restaurant establishment, and then we'll just kind of thank you guys for your service. Okay? Speaking of service, the majority of you, I think five out of the seven, is up. Your term is expiring at the end of December. You should have received an email from the city clerk. Please, if you're interested, please go through the process again. And if you're not, and you say, you know, my time's up on the planning commission, please let us know, but we would like all of you to continue if possible. And the last thing I want to mention is Los Albaux, right? It's funded by the ARPA money. City council has, you know, tried to reinvigorate and support the, reinvigorate the local economy and support small businesses. So we had a webinar this morning at 10:00 a.m. to give information both to the residents and the businesses of Los Alamitos. It was recorded. I believe it's, if it's not already on our website, it'll be on our website fairly soon, so you can get information. But you will receive the Los Albaux, $50 worth, in your mail the first week of November. Okay, so please check that out. And again, spend that at a business that has signed up for the program. We're getting great, great, great feedback and enthusiasm from our business community. So again, shop local this holiday season and utilize your Los Albaux. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Regarding the comment about West Ed.
Right.
Okay, and the activity, or at least now that it's up for sale and developed, how does that comport with our housing element? That we're utilizing that property, correct? And if we now know that it's going to be developed, is there any restrictions or anything that become imposed, like for low-income housing, or for moderate, or whatever? Since it's occurring right about the time we're submitting this, I mean, is this a?
I'm going to have Nicole answer the second part of that question, but the first part I want to answer is, we don't know if it's going to be developed, that land. All right, we know that.
You haven't gotten anything yet.
Yeah, we know that the land was up for auction.
Okay.
Right? And that a company or a developer, someone won, the auction's complete, someone did purchase the property. But they have every right to keep it as an office building if they want. So we don't know for sure, but in our housing update, we have identified that as a possible area for development of housing. All right?
So they come in for a zone change, you know, to a residential zone, then how does that tie into our housing? So that's.
We have it identified in the housing element for rezoning, so that the city will, after the housing element is complete, has rezoning to do that includes changes to the Town Center Mixed Use, to allow for the housing that's planned for that, and for the two independent sites. The, there is an allocation in the housing element of the distribution of unit types by income for the Lamson piece that's listed in the housing element. The city would work with the developer to negotiate a mix of housing. There are, all four income categories are covered on that site, because it's one of our, it's one of our larger sites for housing.
Yes?
Chair Gross, I'm sorry, if I may, just as a point of order, if we're intending to have sort of an extended dialogue or conversation, which is entirely appropriate, just as a point of order, I'd ask that we note that we're reopening the public hearing listed as 7A, and then that gives you all full.
So let's go ahead, and I'll just reopen it, since we hadn't closed it. And did you have a question then that you might like to ask?
What you just spoke about is that, can you identify the page it's on in the sun?
The distribution is on, in Appendix B, page AB4. And that has the distribution of sites by income for all of the sites that we have listed.
Thank you.
And what number is that site?
Six, is Lamson.
Okay. So this kind of ties into the, Mr. Ortiz's comments in a roundabout way. So how, we'll have, we'll be rezoning these parcels, I'm assuming, once it's approved. We will be going through that. And when? We will be going through that. And when we rezoned them, then will we be mandating or requiring that they have this mix or as part of the, as part of that process so that, so that we're in compliance with the housing element? Or are, or is there, is that up to the developer? Will that be up to the developer? You know, how much can we, how much teeth do we, will we have to put into it? Or how, how much of is discretionary with respect to the developer? I'm just kind of, I'm just thinking down the road because this is now, you know, tomorrow is today. You know, it's, we're, it's like we're here.
Let me, let me, let me take a crack at that first. So if we, we're putting this in our housing update and so we're listing in there and if it's approved and our council approves it, we've gone through the public comments and everything like that, the state has approved it, then we do have teeth, but like Nicole said, it's a negotiation. The developer could come in and, you know, say that, let's say we put in there, it's 100 moderate housing there and they're like, you know, we don't want to put 100 moderate housing in there. We want to put 50. We have, we have the, 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 the support or the teeth, like you say, to say, no, we want 100 or we can negotiate that. Is that, is that a correct assumption?
That is correct. There is an addition, there's a, there's a asterisk next to that. With the changes in law, if you, if you don't assign, or don't meet the assignment for the overall RENA, you have to make findings that, and find additional sites. So you'd have to modify your housing element along the way. So if, to use Ron's example, if a site is assigned 100 moderate units and the negotiation winds up at 75 units, then you have to find an alternative site and modify your housing element for those 25 units.
So again, this is one of those difficult things that, you know, it's a state mandate that we have to follow, right? And so, you know, we're, I think I said it before, we're kind of stuck in a rock and a hard place, you know? We have a state mandate on one end and then we have, you know, what the community or what, you know, desires or the residents here desire. So we have to kind of, kind of juggle that as best we can.
Yeah, I guess I just, it, since the property's already sold and who knows what the, you know, that buyer, I mean, if he's hoping to get a, a zone change to residential and, and build up, you know, top-in, single-family homes or multifamily or whatever, I guess this could really, this could have an impact on that. I mean it...
Yeah, but, you know, as you know, Commissioner DeBollet, you know, I just had a conversation with a property owner that's commercial, right? That fronts Cotella and they want to change it to something else and I said, you have to go through the process.
Well, yeah, yeah, I understand.
You know, and bring it for the planning commission, but there's a reason why we don't do commercial to begin with.
Right, right, right.
Correct.
It's just that this, this, that is already zone commercial will be mandated to be changed to a residential zone, you know? So they'll become legal non-conforming if they decide to keep it as a, as a commercial. I mean, I'm just, you know, it's, again, this is all out of Sacramento. This is, this is, these are all these mandates that are coming down. You know, this one is a mandate to, in the words of a former community development director, you know, "We end up ghettoizing our neighborhoods." That's the term that she used in this, you know, for what they did in Long Beach when they imposed additional, you know, multifamily uses, they allowed multifamily into the residential zones in Long Beach. They basically destroyed the neighborhoods, so that, you know. So anyway, just so the public knows that, you know, we, elections have consequences and this is the, you know, we get the government that we elected, so anyway.
Okay, do I have any...
Mandates for everybody.
Questions that you'd like to, before I close this?
Yeah. I was just curious, because I think a lot of us were here when we did the housing element last time. Did, did we hit these numbers? The numbers from our last housing element?
No.
Right.
That was 15?
And what were the, what are the consequences that come down from the state that those numbers get rolled into this number? There's no consequences?
No.
And I guess my next question is, we go through all the motions to do this and we did it last time and then, and we talked about how the city's built out and all that stuff. But then we've done a lot of developments since then.
Yeah, we've done a lot of high-end units.
So is there a reason that, that we didn't, you know, try to meet the requirements of the housing element when those units were being put into place?
We didn't have anything to, it's, it's, things have changed since then. The state has more avenues to force us to do the, the low-income, which by the way, I am. So they would be able to say, take away like CDBG funds, things like that, if we don't follow, correct?
Yes, they can, they, they, there are, there are more teeth than there used to be.
Right.
They can, HCD can now decertify a housing element at any point during the cycle if they, if, if the city is not making an effort to facilitate all types of housing. And, and you file an annual report demonstrating how you are facilitating housing. The, the legislation is, is ever-changing and is getting more, is taking, is taking away more local, you will have less local, local control over time. You are still, however, not mandated to build this housing. You are mandated to facilitate it.
So...
But if it doesn't come to fruition, there's consequences.
Not if the city is making an effort to, for example, when the Lamson site developer comes. The, I've, I, I actually spoke to someone who was looking at, at the auction before they, it was bought. I know Tom spoke to several people as well. There, the, and, and the discussions have been about housing product. They're not looking to, to, to maintain the offices or turn it into retail. As you all know, retail is a very sketchy business right now. So housing, there is pressure for housing. The reason that our RENA is so high this cycle, given the size of Los Alamos, is because the RENA was huge this cycle for the state, huge for, for the Southern California Association of Governments and they distributed it amongst their 191 jurisdictions. They had to assign 1.3 million housing units for the next eight years. So as a fraction of that 1.3, Los Alamos has a relatively small allocation. The development community is looking for additional housing in Orange County, all over Orange County. It is more likely that, that the Lamson site will develop as a residential product. And the way that the inventory is set in our housing element, it would, they would be assigned two-thirds of their total units for above moderate income, which is, which is for market housing. And then the, the one-third would be distributed for lower, lower-income households. And as Tom said, the, the perception of a lower-income household is, is a lot of teachers, nurses, police officers. A low-income household makes 50% to 80% of the county median and the county median now is just under $90,000 a year. So the, the, there are, there are lots of folks who are in the lower-income category who are working professional jobs.
Why not, I think this is a good, I know it's in here, I don't recall the page. Maybe go over like a family of three, what is considered, what is their income and where do they fall for low, moderate, you know, in that...
If you'll give me a minute, sir, I'll find the, the table that I need.
Yeah. So I think, I think that's important too for the public to know that, what is the, what is low income? What, what is the considered to be low income?
While they look for the page, I want to also let the public know in the commission, I don't know if you recall, but the city did, how do you call it? What's the word I'm looking for? Protest the, the RENA numbers.
Right.
We were unsuccessful in our protest, so I just wanted to remind you that we did that.
I found the table, sir.
Okay.
I was, I was curious on regarding John's question, is that, I was thinking the same thing. Do we have from like the last housing, housing element, do we have what was required then and what we actually fulfilled? You know what I mean? Wouldn't that be something that the state would want to look at to say, hey, this is what you said last time and this is what actually happened?
I bet you're referring to our fifth cycle and our fifth cycle number? So what was our fifth cycle number?
Somewhere between 50 and 60. I don't have it off the top.
Yeah, so as you could tell...
It was 50-something.
Yeah, so you could tell it was less than 60. We went from less than 60 to 700, over 750.
Yeah.
You see? And so, you know, did we fulfill our, you know, less than 60? I think we did, or we got really close, right?
Well, we only fulfilled the above moderate income.
Okay, above moderate, yes.
We didn't, we didn't fulfill any of the other stuff. Wouldn't the state look at that and say, maybe that we're not trying to fulfill?
No, no.
There is...
We have to at least tell the developer that they, they, we would like, we have identified their property as possibly a place where low-income housing can go and then they respond back to us.
Interesting. This is all just paperwork.
Yeah.
So we don't have to, we don't have to force it, we just have to facilitate it.
This time, we would need to show them that if we don't put it on this property, that we have to identify other properties in the city, which, you know, might be, you know, somewhere really uncomfortable for it to be. So we might have to get rid of retail places or, you know, so it's, it's really, you either, you either kind of nudge them to build those there or we have to find another place for them to go, so.
Okay, sorry.
She's found it.
So it's, it's table 2-13 on page 2-11, if you want to look at your housing element. A, a low-income household that has one person makes $75,300 a year. A low-income household with four people would make up to $107,550 a year. A very low-income household with three people would make $60,550 per year. And that's, all of that, all of those numbers are tied to, to the, the cost of living in Orange County in particular.
Right. So...
They're a lot higher than you would expect.
Yeah, so, so low income is a lot higher than what I think people generally think of when you see low income.
Yeah.
And that, unfortunately, that cuts both ways for a lot of stuff, but for purposes of this, I mean, it, if that's any consolation, if you're a family of four, yeah, at moderate income, you're $128,050 per year. And, you know, I don't know how many of us are in the low-income range. You know, I mean, based on this, I mean, it's, so anyway, thank you. That's the end of my comments.
I have one more question for those rousing questions. On, I was just curious, ADU has been a topic lately and so forth. And on, on page 3-18, it talks about ADUs and one of the points it makes is, it says, "One off-street parking space must be provided for an ADU unless certain conditions are met in municipal code chapters, such and such." My understanding that no off-street parking was required for ADU, that you didn't have to have. Am I incorrect on that?
Yeah, so, so our municipal code is consistent with state law and the state law essentially says you can require one parking spot for a new detached ADU. You can't require any parking if it's a converted ADU, meaning you've taken an existing accessory structure or you've built within the walls of an existing home.
Okay.
In that case, you can't require any. Jumping back to where we said you could require one, however, we're not able to require the one in reality in most cases because if you're anywhere near a public bus station, there's other exemptions, historic districts, proximity to a ride-share vehicle. Things along those lines are kind of the exception to our ability to impose one, so.
I saw that.
As it works out practically, it's probably best stated to say there's no parking for ADUs because I think that's, in, in most instances, that's the way it actually works out.
Okay, I'll read the next one too, because I don't understand what it is. Next one says, "The height of the ADU, the height of an ADU shall not exceed 16 feet unless the ADU is within the existing space of a single-family dwelling and accessory structure or a multifamily dwelling structure." Trying to figure what that, what that means exactly. "The height of an ADU shall not exceed 16 feet unless the ADU is within the existing space of a single-family dwelling?"
Yeah, so that's confusing wording, but essentially what that's saying is if you build a new detached or a new unit that's sort of affixed or attached to an existing structure, you're capped at that 16-foot height. But if you were to build an ADU within an existing garage that is 24 feet tall, for example, that in essence can become a 24-foot tall ADU without hitting our maximum height limitation.
Okay.
And then similarly, for a single-family home, could have a two-story home that has an ADU within it that exceeds that 16-foot height.
Thanks.
Do I have any other questions before I close it back up? I do have one. Do we know of any areas in California that have been exempt from the housing element?
No.
So it doesn't matter where you live in this state, every county and every city has had to find housing?
Yes.
Low-income housing.
Including fully-built-out communities.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing as that we don't have any questions on this, I'm not actually closing, I'm just going to continue it, but close it for questions, okay? And going back to the commissioners' reports, anything that the commissioners want to say? Okay, first off, I'd like to address the December 8th. Is that okay with everyone to meet on December 8th?
It's good, yes.
Okay, 7 o'clock is what you'd like? Okay, 7 o'clock.
I think so. I might have, it's my daughter's birthday, but that might not be an issue.
We can have a party here. We're all for parties.
She'll be super excited about that. Definitely her demographic.
The thing, my question for either one of you, with the next week, the development down at Cotella and Lexington, that would be by Cotella Deli and I noticed that they're also doing a lot of work. Will that create any problems for them at all with the manhole covers and stuff like that being tore up? I've seen them up on the roof, so I don't want some potential for injury over at Cotella Deli.
Are you, if I understand your question, will the OC Sand project affect the construction going on at Cotella Deli?
Yeah.
The answer is no.
Okay, there's no safety problems?
No.
Okay. And then I thought the Bux program, I've had already a couple businesses already approached me and are very excited, so that's nice. I really appreciate all the work both of you guys did or in fact, the whole city did at putting that together. It speaks highly of our city and for our businesses. I want to bring to attention, if you guys have not seen it, the corner of Walnut and Cotella, I'm not going to get the building right, but I'm referring to, we had the gentleman that came to us about putting in the physical therapy for the sports injury. But they did a really nice job after we approved it. They have painted the whole building, all of it. It looks really nice, so make sure to see it. And they're putting implants and they're doing everything they can to really improve it. So I thought that was really nice, especially since they're now all fully occupied. And I wanted to bring that to our attention. I think Cotella Deli's nice. Do we have any projects that because of COVID had to take a step back? I haven't seen the hospital move forward with their stuff, but it may be because of COVID.
Yeah, we, we actually extended the deadlines for people. You know, it expires usually a site plan review, which is now a site development permit. They expired at 18 months or 24 months, depending on what we put. They now can hold off while COVID is happening, whatever, during the COVID pandemic, I think. They now can hold off while COVID is happening, whatever, during the COVID pandemic, I think. Was something like that. So they, there are a few that have decided to put it off, like the hospital, for instance. That they, of course, have bigger things going on, so.
Okay, that's all. I thank you for everything and I'm going to go ahead and close the meeting. And we'll adjourn until December 8th. Thank you.